Right. That for me, it ain't January ninth. And I believe. I'm expecting Judy imminently. But what do we take?
You're good.
We're good. You got it? Okay, good. Let us go then to the. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I slipped. Coming here, so.
Oh, I'm good.
I'm good. It's all good. So tonight, we are talking about two things. The City Council work plan and discussion direction. City Council expectation setting. The first issue. We. We reached a consensus. After some discussion last fall. Before the election around. Our. Our work plan. And. The way I wanted to frame this discussion tonight, actually before anything happened. I'm wearing a mask just because I'm getting over a cold right now. In the interests of. The shoulders for under. Additional caution on. We had a discussion about the work plan and reach a consensus on that. And. We. Seated a new council. Right after the election. And there was really several reasons for coming back to. To look at work plan, making sure that we're comfortable with it. The first. Reason is, as I said, we are a new council. We have additional vulnerabilities within the. Shortly, Judy Kerr. And wanted to make sure. That she had an opportunity to. Have her concerns. Known and to add them to the list or provide her loss on. A work plan. The second is that. Most. Yes, everyone here was elected. And the fall or reelected. And so we are. In the process of. And making sure that. As a result of the continuing election. We are still comfortable with all of the priorities. In the work plan and the items. And finally. And this is sort of. A function of some decisions we made in the fall. Then these were solidified, although I don't know who made them in the fall. But. The work plan is. A list of priorities that we're going to have for 2024 on this council. And. The boards and commissions. Work plans, which are. Under discussion now will be. Will need to be within. The scope of the sort of things that we're interested in. As far as. The plan or items. So it's going to drive that and I want to make sure. They're all comfortable about it. Do people have any concerns from those quarters that could make this clear? So what I would propose to do tonight. Is. To go through. Section by section. The work plan. We have. Our highest priority items. Right now, we have six. We have medium priority items. We have six of those and then we've got some low priority items, if you will. Five in number right now. Now, the fact that. Just a little background, the fact that something is a low priority doesn't mean. It's the lowest. It is not something we really care very much about. It's just that in the three categories, it's the lowest of the three. So there were items that we didn't include, for example, in any category. Which are, you know, outside that. Right. And then finally, we have over years. Realized that some priorities are really. Staff issues that are ongoing. Primary staff. That leave council input and decision. And those are the final category. I'm not sure. We necessarily need to do on this night, but in the interests of. You know, the good of the order with the slider. Try to do that. So with those things in mind, one and I. Turn it over to Sam Fox, acting city manager.
Thank you. I'm Sam Fox, acting city manager tonight, deputy city manager. I have a brief presentation to kind of refresh us on where we are in the council work plan and we'll open this up for discussion. We're going to talk a little bit about. Still gave him a minute, but. We talked a little about framing and overview. I want to talk about some key considerations for 2024. There's a lot of things coming up in this year and a few things that happen. Rarely or not as often. So I want to make sure we can point those. And then we'll have some more opportunity for discussion. If you want to move to the third slide. For vision framing. Well, there's always technical errors, right? So I just want to start this with our highest. Thing that we're always working towards, our vision, our mission and values. And I won't read these all to you because we all know them, we've all worked through them, they've been part of our strategic processes. But everything we do is in service of our vision, our values here. That kind of goes into this, right? So that purpose and vision is our top priority. And that's where council is spending most of their time, if we look at this flight path analogy. I'm sure this is a flight path analogy used by the International City Management Association, who help define goals and help us with where we're working today. That next level, forty thousand feet, strategic goals. And tonight, we're really going to focus on that thirty thousand foot level, that priority action items. These are the things that you want to prioritize in the next year. So your 2024 work plan. As we move down to planning and oversight projects and day-to-day work, you can see that staff responsibility becomes increasingly more and council becomes a little bit set back from those who stayed in our policy. So we have an annual work line that this organization has been doing for some years. This is driven by council priority every year. It's used to set advanced agenda items and important staff priorities. In 2023, the timing of this council work plan was adjusted. So the council work plan could be done ahead of the budgeting process and helping inform the budgeting process. Items that are high on your council work plan currently are the comprehensive plan. This is a ten-year update. We're required to do this. The strategic land use code provision, open space management, transportation topics, economic vitality, affordable housing, climate change, greenhouse gas reduction initiatives. Items in your median category are resiliency and fire hunting, equity, diversity and inclusion. Sustainability programs, parks, recreation, open space departmental master plan, recreation amenities and minimum wage adjustments. Items in the low in the council work plan right now are Main Street closure, campaign finance rules, limits. Communications, marketing and automation software, completion of the old town assembly update and update to development impact fees. As the mayor mentioned, there are also a number of ongoing items. These are items that council will have interaction with throughout the year. These include budgets, utility rate updates, council salary survey, airport mitigation efforts, PEDs, development projects. And a myriad of items that we may not be able to anticipate. There will always be injections and then we might have to adjust our. I specifically want to call out on this list is the resident survey. This is something we do every four years and it's coming up in 2024. A few key considerations as you discussed tonight. I think it's important to be thoughtful of. With 2024, the comp plan, the resident survey coming up, a variety of other budget issues, we have a lot of engagement going on with the rest of our community. So it's important to think of that community capacity to engage and continue to be engaged and what that community is willing to engage with us on. As well as capacity for staff, council, and everyone doing this works, what we can really do with the job with the budgets we've got or missed. We also always want to come back to the alignment by vision, mission, values. Recognize we've got emergent issues, so we may need periodic re-prioritization. We could have applications, we could have additional time. And this is a resident survey year. So we do our resident survey every four years. It's an important piece of feedback we get from our community. It allows us to see some trends. So we can see where we've been in the past and maybe this year. It's been four years since we've done this survey. And there are a few different things that we noticed about. So it's a big year for the survey. With that, I'd like to turn it back over to the mayor for discussion.
Thank you very much. That was, that was very good. I learned a. I learned an expression today, which was, what was it? Public.
Survey fatigue?
Public survey fatigue. Yeah, because of how many times. People. Are the last. In terms of these priorities. One way of doing this, of course, is whether you want to ban and. Sort of rehash. And I don't think that that's really the best way of. Proceeding. I think the best way of proceeding is often leaders through exception is. When I go through each section. Ask if folks have either things to add or tweak or. De-prioritize or. Or it has a little higher, that's fine too. I think I'd like to try if we can. At least potentially to put a little bit more specificity to some of these. We've had concerns in past meetings around this that. Sometimes these topics are so general. That. It's kind of hard to know. What they're actually going to encompass or not. So bear that in mind too. And if any of you have concerns about something not being specific enough, maybe too specific, just raise that one. We manage that. So. Yeah, as. Well, first, before we even enter the house, why don't we take a little comment and then we'll move to our council discussion. So do we have? Do we have any cards or hands up? Anybody in the room who have? Any comments to make us? Good. So let's. Deal with. The first. Part of this. Of the priorities that we. The six priorities that are the top priorities for us. I guess first, I want to. Make sure that. These generally are the. Are acceptable. If they're not. Then let's talk about. Maybe their specifics or priority within. So I will throw that out there. In that first list, the higher priority items. There's. Everybody agree or disagree with those as being. Yes.
I agree with these as being priorities. I would like to specify. One priority in the transportation topics. Would be somehow regulating e-bikes and scooters, things on the city streets. For traffic safety. Item. And also, if there's some way that we could. Combine the idea of transportation needs with affordable housing needs. Because the two can't exist separately from each other. If there's an affordable housing unit, there has to be a way for them to get from there to. Wherever they want to go, to the job, to the hospital, to whatever they need to do. And vice versa. If there's transportation and there's no, probably there. Or use it. It's not functional. So if there can be some way that we combine those two concepts when we're, you know, approving a PUD or whatever.
I thought it was an easy added. I said, I thought it was an easy added. I'm sorry, I'm being cliche. I mean, like that, that is probably one of the biggest obstacles right around, like, talking about affordable housing and private. How do you merge the two? Like, you already have a mix of both in place, so it's.
Other, other folks, why don't we, you know, one way of doing this is to sort of get everybody's comments out and then deal with all of them after that. But I think we're small enough. That we'd like to maybe take a chat on. Yeah, let's maybe talk about the housing and transportation one first.
I don't know that I have anything to add, but I agree that. E-bikes piece is, is critical, is interesting. I was talking to someone just the other night about it. Actually, it was in reference to Port Dalia and like comments around, you know, what we've done there, why we did it. And, you know. One of the things is, you know, when, when residents complain that like, if we don't do something, someone's going to die. And then if we don't do anything and someone dies, it does kind of feel like, wow, well, that, they called us on it and we didn't do anything. And so I think, you know. Again, the Polk Dali reference was, there've been accidents and we're trying to do something to prevent the next accident. And if we do nothing, then it kind of feels like it's on us, even if we may not have a ton of power. Well, the e-bikes, I feel sort of the same way that like. We have been, I have been told by dozens of residents that like. A kid is going to die soon because of what's going on. And I don't know that we have control over that. But I think a failure to do something substantive, to at least start the conversation about what can be done in e-bikes, is, is going. To be a major problem if something happens soon. And again, that doesn't mean we can magically avoid anything ever happening, but I don't think we want to be. Behind on this topic because it's one of those major safety issues right now that is. Definitely buzzing in our community. And so I think it's on here. Traffic safety is on here. But I think the specific call out to e-bikes, I appreciate. I don't necessarily have the solution. Here, and that's not what tonight's about. But, but as, as an importance, I think that's, that is. Super important. The weather is such that e-bikes are a little less common today than it will be in March and April. So. But I would hope, I would hope by, by the time we're in that season, we've come up with some ideas to make an actual change there. So I appreciate that. And then as far as traffic linking with affordable housing. Absolutely. I. Not sure what the changes in this document, but I think both, both are critical. And, you know, I, I, I hope I'm known as caring deeply about the affordable housing piece. I'll beat that drum every, every meeting and every opportunity I can. I don't talk about the transportation stuff as often and I appreciate that. Those two are very much in a fun way. I'll talk about. Transit-oriented development very, very fluently, but that is such an important combination. So I support your edits and your thoughts and certainly I like all these priorities. Mayor, just sort of back up from my, my perspective of these, is it six, seven priorities? That I still agree with all these. I think these are the main, the main issues we need to be dealing with. And the only thing I was going to say is that the open space management. It's kind of interesting now that the tax passed. Since we started this conversation, this was important anyway. And now we have some more funds for this dedicated to open space management and all the things on this list. So I am excited. Our staff has started working on this, on these things. I think we've given a lot of direction. And my only, my only curiosity is how much council time? Is, how high of a priority is this from a council perspective? I think we've given a lot of direction. And there's a lot of money. Pointed at this topic. And this feels like for me. Don't get me wrong. I know it's important, but a low priority for council because. I think we've set the policy pretty clearly and direction pretty clearly that, that fire mitigation and open space mitigation is incredibly important. And our staff is working on it and they're, and they've done a lot of things that were already recommended. I'm so proud of our staff for the direction they're headed. And now we have more money to do it even better. And I'm not sure what we're going, I'm going to tell staff in the next six months that's any different than like. Keep going. You're doing awesome. Keep going. So I don't, I don't know how much, you know, two to three, or sorry, as needed, I think. It's high priority, but meetings as needed. Like, is this, is this a high priority for council? Or not?
I'm going to call time now.
Yeah.
I want to kind of address the two concerns and then we can come back to this because I think this is a. Want to head on.
I apologize for going next.
Right. We're all a bit kind of excited about these, you know, to get them underway, I think. One thing I, I'll mention, and you've kind of alluded to this. We're not having. We're sort of having a little bit of a substantive discussion tonight because we have to, right? We can't just say. We may not be able to just. Agree to a phrase without. Discussing and giving direction. And that is what we're doing tonight, giving direction. That's why I have a special meeting instead of just a study session. So, but. We can't go into detail on all of these things and aren't. That's what we're talking about. So I mean, I think we're hitting it at the right level. I just wanted to kind of bring that to that. Other folks on, on concern with that that raised about the. Affordable housing, long-term transportation or e-bikes.
Yeah. So it's kind of in the same venue with the traffic safety, if it could actually be, because it's equal as important, but a different topic, is pedestrian safety. So it should be like traffic safety slash pedestrian safety. They are two different things. You address them differently. So and maybe where's a separate line item, but I was just like, when it comes up there, there's nothing specific on that. And that seems to be an important topic right now. I, again, so the e-bike on the state level. There, we're moving in the right direction. We state is like doing some of the same things. There's conversation now about. This session, putting forward some legislation that's going to mandate things like, almost like the video driver's education. In other states, we don't, but enforcing that. And then like the next layer of that would be e-bikes. And that there has to be like training and almost like a license that they, that people would have to have, adults or children that have been on a driver's license in order to have an e-bike. And so I think if we wanted to kind of look and see what. Was considered for the docket at the state level, maybe guide something along that might be helpful and faster and easier for us. Otherwise, yeah, we have that. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I would agree with adding a e-bike thing and the comment about it's, it's traffic, pedestrian bikes. So I mean, sure, general. Road safety, whatever you're calling. I think probably the regulatory ordinance piece is the easy piece for us. I think we've got interesting stuff going on. It's probably. Good examples from other jurisdictions, because what the state's doing, the harder part will simply be, you can write all orders as you want and have, have big people sort of implement them and follow it and. You got education and I think to Carol's point, that's probably. That is the answer, especially when their paradigms is for those who are. I also agree about the transit housing link, although I don't necessarily need to make a change to the document. I think it's important that.
Is a part of the council's data before that? I mean, is there a font that it's already in there? That talks about that?
Monsters.
I, so I agree with priorities four through seven, the priorities. I agree with what's been suggested as far as updates and changes. They did have a question that popped in tonight as you all were chatting. And I'm not certain if this falls under one M. Or under four H. Or not at all on this, but my thoughts were around evacuation events. Does that fall on this or is that something that's not appropriate for the work plan that is being handled in other ways?
I, that's a really good question. Preparedness is. A real term, I think, for that. But it doesn't. It doesn't necessarily that. I think it probably fits in one M. We can talk about how that goes, but I mean. I guess it'd be interesting to hear staff perspective on that. Because I know that there are efforts going on between Superior and Louisville right now and the county, I think, on preparedness. And, yeah, I mean, just sort of a point of. Clarification, you put that is a better item. For resilience.
Personally, I think it aligns with resiliency. I think it's okay to put in either place that you like in, just reflecting that it becomes a priority, like staff to put someone.
Yeah, the reason why I brought it up, this clear point earlier about adding a bit more detail to this, and I think that's a really important topic to highlight.
I think that's. A lot. I, I absolutely agree on the e-bike safety and I like the idea of. Call, you know, doing much sort of traffic safety, pedestrian safety. I don't know how many things we put in there as traffic safety embraced. Cyclist safety.
I think it does under. Yes. The traffic. Safety, but I mean, even the chief police will say that pedestrian safety is actually a different topic than traffic safety.
I'm fine. I think that's a really good suggestion with people, people comfortable with adding.
Well, I mean, if that's a conversation that I've never thought of, traffic safety as being a high priority for Louisville is the pedestrian and bicycle safety, like. Where I'm not getting calls like, it's really tough for me to drive. Safely around this town. It's, it's. I always thought of traffic safety as meaning like.
The pedestrians are.
From traffic, yeah.
They're not being hit by the pedestrians.
I would just offer really the whole narrative system. Cars, bikes, people, safety. ordinances to support that system working well for whatever user it's for. So you don't have to worry to sniff it out. We hear and then we'll approach that topic with.
Yeah, I do know that I would agree that we haven't heard a lot about. Traffic safety. I think we've heard a lot about. Lanes and striping and, and the connection to traffic safety is very real there. Connection to bike safety and pedestrian safety is there too, obviously. So, you know, I, I think that's, that's where I guess I would perhaps disagree a little bit. And I think it is. You know. I think the safety of our kids and so forth on the street, that's pretty clearly always. A priority, but.
Well, so, I mean, do we agree that traffic safety and pedestrian safety are not? Separate. Like in this document, traffic safety does include pedestrian.
Safety. I, I, I'm fine with that, but I, I take the point that. You know, it's made to include it. I mean, I think what Director Thor just said is that it embraces everything, yeah. You know, sort of the traffic system. Maybe we can call it traffic system safety, if that was.
I, it's just a come up. We definitely have heard this a lot. That residents do not. residents do not like us combining and trying to find one solution that fits cars, bikes, people. They would like the people's solution to be identified specifically and handled differently than we do creating a bike lane, little bike bikes, cause that more people walk. And it creates, and when we try to like fix everything with one solution, you wind up not fixing anything. So, and that's, so that's the only reason I bring it up is that they, because they would like to see that they are addressed differently staff wise, police presence, that they are not merged into one solution, one topic. That's the only use that I can think of.
And I think that, 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 I'm not sure anybody disagrees with that. Um, it's really a, maybe a question of what's embraced in there. I, I think what we've been, and you know, I wanna get to these others too, but, um, I, I hear what you're saying, but, you know, each, each of these groups is dealt with both, you know, individually and as a system, Director Corrigan, is that?
I think I understand where each person's coming from and I got it. So when you say get it by a buzz.
So are we good in a holiday? Yes.
I just want to add, I mean, maybe focusing on a transportation aspect here is that clearly has policies to bring in all of the users. I mean, the term that we're using, all users and all, well, we've used the whole notes. And so I think we do have language in our document policies that reflects what we wanna do. So, um, you know, transfer, you know, maybe transportation, the traffic, the more inclusive, uh, all of transportation and a little bit of word expansion.
Okay. That did your suggestion, says.
Transportation.
Transportation safety. So traffic safety.
Uh, so.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Keep him in the room.
Chris?
Yeah.
Could we just like, we do another six H in parentheses, specify automotive, bicycle and pedestrian?
I think we can do anything we want. The question is how long we'll, we'll discuss it tonight.
I'll tell you what, I think we're all, you know, in a similar places to the importance of the topic. I think we're in some different places about what we do about it.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm confident we'll all remember this conversation and then traffic, how safety comes up in a few years.
I, I think, I think that, um, uh, Director Saccaro's got a good, I, I think I, we call it transportation safety. I think we all agree that it embraces more than just cars and that will deal with all these issues in a way that once we get to the specific discussion in our tearing out of the work plan, we'll deal with it. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Really good, um.
Oh, I was just gonna see, honey, take a moment.
That was just what we did.
This was public comment?
At the beginning.
No, we did it at the beginning.
Um, so what we've got is, uh, the other issue is affordable housing connection, transportation. Um, I guess, you know, one of the, you know, we could add a topic, uh, uh, in affordable housing, specifically calling out uh, TOD or transportation oriented development if we wanted to. Um, that I think would take into consideration transportation issues. We could either do that or we, we transportation mentioned, um, connection to the thing about it is it's not just affordable housing, it's economic utility and I mean, there's a whole bunch of other things, but, um, how do, how do people feel about adding transportation oriented development to perhaps the, the second bullet of affordable housing? Yes.
Um, so my, my thought on this is, and I don't need to move it on the document, but both of these topics are in a lot of ways, um, subordinate to the comprehensive plan that will, the, the vehicle for implementing affordable housing and transportation. If we still live in the near term, here is going to be through our comp plan discussions. And I wonder if there's some way to capture that. Right? I mean, that is the place where we get to look at everything all together all at once. What's the move? Um, and, and so maybe there's a way to sort of indicate on where that people would consider as part of the comp plan. Transportation is a piece, the driving is a piece, economic, like how you can feel that those are pieces of those as well. How do I feel about that?
I, I think, I think my, I agree, um, generally speaking, I agree. I think my concern is, um, you know, that this is the city of Louisville, that spot right there is prime for affordable housing right now. And we're gonna wait two years to do anything about it. And in that time, it goes away and becomes something else, right? So my concern is I think there are some like urgent affordable housing things we might need to be doing before we finish the comp plan, but the comp plan itself
Yeah.
is gonna be a way better tool for how we address it more systemically and over the next 10 years. But, um, I think we currently have situations like this in front of us that we don't, we don't quite know how to deal with right now. And we don't quite know how Prop one, two, three is gonna influence. So we don't quite have a budget for how we wanna do it. We have things that might come, projects that might come that have fee and lieu that we commute, but it's like, gosh, if we don't have this conversation and then, and then in this list again, I keep harping on this, but ADUs in the rebuild right now, you have people rebuilding without ADUs because they're not allowed. And so we wait two years to address ADUs. Hopefully every one of the fire destroyed homes will be rebuilt without the capability they use, right? And so there's some things I think are need to come before a comp plan, but, but I do, I do think globally, you're right. I think, I think it's, it, it, it's gonna be addressed more ultimately through after that.
Would it, I agree with that too. Do you think that adding to that little list there, the second bullet under affordable housing, you know, something related to transportation, whether it's transportation oriented development or something like that would cover the shorter term issue?
I mean, I, I don't think there's anything about TOV, I think it's a unknown component of affordable housing plan. So I think throwing TOV in the list there, bold T is perfect.
Good.
Yeah, it's, it's good. It makes us. Would that not be a part of the strategic plan that's in the first bullet? We've already the comprehensive, you know, that's what I asked them and they said it's not part of it. Uh, sorry.
Well, I think that's a good question.
Right. So I would say that the housing plan, as we're envisioning it, we're, we're finalizing it now. I hope we'll see it soon. Um, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna talk about how the city could prioritize housing development, affordable housing, and you know, some of that criteria would do trans oriented development, um, as a factor that would kind of guide where development would go. Again, the comprehensive plan is where we would dig into those longer tenure. But of course, two H, I think, I think we talked a little bit about this last time you had, um, the discussion and two H talked about what we could do, which is strategic plan, code revisions for other initiatives before the company has the purpose of. Two H doesn't specifically call out transit oriented development, but the housing plan is gonna suggest that initiatives take, you know, weigh that pedal in your consideration. Good, but it's not, it's not policy you wanted, so without writing more of comments.
But I guess to the urgency, right, is, you know, we want this addressed prior to the comprehensive plan coming through, the, and is it that the suggestion is maybe we wait for someone else to come to us with a request? Versus us making it like a priority for areas of our community that we.
So I think, you know, what the city, the city can control, you're saying the city can control, can't control. I mean, you, you can be more proactive. A lot of times that takes funding. We don't have a lot of funding. Another proactive approach are land use, you know, you all control land use. That can actually facilitate more than us partnering or putting money into a project. Is looking at strategic land use code revisions, um, can really facilitate bringing private investment into these projects, especially with Prop one, two, and three. We actually don't need to do anything for Prop one, two, and three. We offered in the development, the development, we now take advantage of that program because we're in, we're in it right now. So, um, there's a lot to talk about on that. I think, again, as I'm hearing all the conversation, I think we're we're going in that direction. You know, wherever we put it in this plan, I think it's clear to us that I, I don't know the perfect place to put that terminology in your work plan either, but I think if you wanna put it in, put it in anywhere and we'll, you know, make sure it's in consideration.
It sounds like it, yeah, it sounds like it's gonna break single land use revisions. If we're gonna, you know, if we're talking about places that aren't already coded for it, we're gonna have to do something about that.
Right, and that could be a private developer bringing forward.
Or we could say.
Yeah, for no reason, then look at something differently, um, without a private developer. Before the, before the competent ones, those, those are big discussions, though they're, we need a lot of community input, of course. Um, any of those, and I, I'm confident they all would have lots of community input and discussion.
And so are we comfortable leaving those categories the way they are? The most exceptional, adding TOD and the second bullet?
Cause I would also add that, uh, in addition to affordable housing and transit oriented, that is, that's also a factor in economic development. Uh, of course, if you've got.
What is that?
Where housing is. So if it's, if you put in housing via, by a bus stop, but it's also next to a row of restaurants or small shops, everybody's with that.
Um, I think that, I mean, what I would say is probably if it's in this, if it is, if it is.
Probably, that's what I would say, yeah.
Um, the, the other piece, and I don't think we ever call this out because it did get some, to some extent, some soon, um, in TOD, uh, the purchase or perspective for anticipated purchase, uh, by CU of the theater, prop, the, sorry. Has one, probably fits, um, we need to make it into affordable housing, but it certainly fits into TOD. Um, so I don't know, I, I think I'm comfortable personally with it, you know, just leaving it out, which is one level specificity different, but, uh, you know, uh, greater. I'm not sure it's really necessary part of that, what do you want?
That's good.
Okay. So, um, this, does that cover, um, at least for the substantive point of, you, the first seven, I said six, sorry about that.
Yeah.
Uh, seven of the items, yes.
I don't think we want yet to either substitute or add any of the high priority.
Um, we could, um, absolutely, although I think, um, if we make that list too long, we have the, one of the other things priority, one of the top priority.
I just, I was looking at the strategic land use code revisions and it says to be determined. We don't have much time to expand. It seems like that's more of a consequence of other decisions that we make versus it is a top priority to make media code changes. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
Are we planning on specifically having conversations about changing the code before the comp plan? And that's why it is a priority or is it just a result of other decisions?
Now, it is a priority, I mean, these are sort of chicken or egg issues.
Yeah.
Um, I think that probably, um, Directors of Car can articulate this better than I, but there are, um, a number of issues in the code land use processes that, um, I think we would probably either confering Directors of Bar, Directors of Bar, with that's the very general knowledge about some of these things that are just kind of blurring, um, sort of antiquated provisions or different things that might better be handled administratively or things, you know, processes where we don't need multiple trips to the land commission, that sort of thing. And the idea, uh, I think is to try to streamline that soon, not wait for the comp plan process to take us, so there are things that we can do sooner to address tons of it. Did I get that right?
Yeah, I, yeah, in my mind, two H improved both process changes as well as potential plans. That's a workable project, but the process changes, yes, I think we we're actually, yeah, we'll be seeing soon, a kind of minor, but hopefully meaningful process change for that they'll see soon, um, depending on time and resources this year, we try to bring forward some other changes. We've talked extensively about coming off of comprehensive plan and doing a reform of our land use code or rewriting our land use code. That should be done probably. Keeping in mind that a land, a land use code rewrite can actually just replicate the existing zoning, doesn't have to massively change zoning, but significantly improve the process understanding. And we could also make changes to the actual zoning along the way. But almost when we talk about whole land use rewrite of our code with the city, it doesn't mean we're gonna you know, change the actual land uses or densities or majority of the city, but we might wanna do it for some reason.
So how, so a lot of this then in this topic, and I'm sorry that I'm laboring this, is more a heavy lift on your end, your staff, versus like maybe it comes to us.
Yeah, it was right, yeah, it depends on the issue. I mean, some things could come to you for discussion direction and if, if we, you or us feel like we need discussion direction before actually process. We don't have an active listening list, but we, we could also hear from you. You all identify, um, a priority code revision, um, or land use change. We're certainly at the ready to work on that, to identify explicitly one, or again, as once those, you know, once the housing plan is adopted, I think that could be a springboard for us to then think of a couple of things that are maybe the most impactful and timely for this year.
So, um, the reason I was having you and I appreciate the specificity that it's procedural as well as, um, actual that changes to the land use and stuff, is you're saying if we make everything a priority, nothing is priority. So I was trying to figure out where this actually fell into priority, like this is something that's being worked on in the next 30 to 60 days? Or is this something that we're gonna be working on in the next six to seven months?
And that's, you know, that's in the far right, um, we can.
Yeah, and it says all fours. So that's why I was like, you know, I was curious because of things I think should be a priority that should move into earlier forms. And hence the priority being something that we also would want to address with, um, speed urgency as well. And that was the only reason I was thinking if we added something to the priority list and made it a timeline.
Um, that, yeah, we got this discussion, there is a little time of how, in what order we do these things, everything, help the C staffs, why the state. Um, and we can have that discussion, um, I wonder whether maybe, maybe on the first set of big priorities, we oughta talk about the timeline. I, I'm hesitant to do it on the others, but, um, this one, maybe I, you know, all of them, there is work being done, just because these are, they, they always speak really hard to say. Um, it's really hard to say there's, you know, we oughta make this, a Q one, two, three, I mean, I don't, I don't know if we can actually do that or whether we should get in the means on to do that ourselves. So, um, any thoughts about that?
Which I thought some staff.
Please.
So if I look at your top seven plays and I look at the advanced agenda, I can see that we've got most of these on your advanced agenda in the coming couple of months here. So we're having some initial conversations. Some of these have long timelines here, Q one through Q four, because there's a lot of work. There're gonna be a lot of links with that. Some of them have long timelines, it's a comprehensive plan, it's been a long process, we're gonna keep coming back. Some of them have long timelines because there are a lot of components to this, right? That transportation topic is a big topic. We've got a whole session dedicated to that coming up. And we'll talk through more about any of those priorities there. So if I'm looking at the advanced agenda and looking at these top ones, it feels like we've got them scheduled pretty early for you to. If I'm looking at the advanced agenda and looking at these top ones, it feels like we've got them scheduled pretty early for you to have more conversation, provide new direction on them. If you're looking at that and feeling differently, we definitely want to hear that.
I, I would also add, um, we can only meet twice a month, basically. Although it feels like. And the reality is fitting in, if you have a priority that you're going to maintain to us, so. I'm working on next week's packet right now, February, we kind of blocked off for a land use, for our land use case. So suddenly having a priority, hitting it into your actual meeting schedule could take ones. So that's something.
So something needs to, or we, we discuss, and we figure can become or should become for the good of the community of priority. It might be a good idea to do that in order to facilitate you helping us bring it to the staff.
It's, it's a game of Texas. You do first, and where you take it, and how you fit it on the management.
It's kind of that capacity piece, right? Council has capacity to, not that it's.
I have two, I mean, do you, do you have good enough direction on that?
I believe I do.
Piece, well, there are a couple, um, one of, a couple of issues, one is I'm noticing on six H. You know, months ago, we said could also include, which sounds a little. Like the language that we often use in my day job, including, but not limited to, or not even that. You know, may include, but maybe not, that's somebody else's expression. Do we want to get any more specific? About those, do we want to include all of them, do we want to pick among them? And of course, the ever-provoked question, what does staff feel is doable? But why don't we start, you know, is that a question that we want to deal with right now, I, I, I have some discomfort. Because we don't say it elsewhere, we don't say, you know, in open space management, list four things. We don't do that anywhere else except here, just like.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Just for context, my recollection is that we left it that way, knowing the housing plan was coming. So we wanted to let that inform these priorities, so include some flexibility here for types of topics, we want to make sure we're thinking through. And then let that discussion inform which ones get the worst.
I, I, I think you may be right about that. Thoughts? So maybe leave it?
Yeah.
For that, okay. The other thing, and I don't know whether this is all about economic vitality. Or city climate change, greenhouse gas reduction initiatives. But we had hoped, I think. Well, last year, maybe we had a. Maybe overly optimistic that we would deal with the commercial energy code and revisit a couple of. Issues there. I guess I would feel more comfortable listing that somewhere. Perhaps in economic vitality, because that's one of the drivers that people have. The concern that raised about that, um, I don't know, I don't know whether city climate, obviously. In fact, city climate change initiatives, also, um, although. It may, I think, straddles both, do people have thoughts about that?
I mean. I know that the. Finding some fixes to, and we put a very aggressive code out there that there's some concerns of inability to meet code. Based on some, some of the technologies or availability of some things, and so needing to potentially have some. Adjustments as it's going into, into practice. So whether you throw that, you know, attraction of new business, parentheses, like, commercial code, you know, it's like. It's a little weird spot with that, in my opinion, I think, I think you're right, that economic vitality or, or. A business coming in successfully, building a new building might have some issues because of that code thing. But I, I don't know that I will necessarily put it in the economic vitality bucket as much as I. But I, I agree that it's an important topic. Rod, Kurt, Rob, do you have a sense of? You know, are, is that something that's happening?
Yes, it's, it's, um, it's happening, it's coming pretty quickly, maybe, you know, for the end Q one, or. Something on that. So I mean, you can also look at it preparing for last year's plan, where it's getting to. You'll have something.
In the ongoing, the last.
Yeah, I don't know if it's on the list, but it's, it is.
It, it is.
On our, on our work plan, we've already done substantial work on it.
Yeah.
Getting it to you all, I think it's final round form, we'd have to do a little bit more research, but then we thought we were going to have to do a couple of months ago. On some technical and visual issues, but I think we worked through it, and we worked for. Working through some.
That's, it's a good suggestion, I just like it reflected specifically, and I'm fine with doing it as an ongoing item, but you're right, it was. One of those kind of things that distracts, does anybody have any problem with that, or you know, scientists or? Then, coming back. Was there, you said, gee, should we?
So specifically, it's the resiliency and firehardening, especially if we're going to include emergency management procedures. Um, for the city, which has been extensively worked on by the local county, um, city of Louisville, city superior, but yet. Here, everybody, like, the collective communities have been very involved in this, um, and have made substantial and significant improvements, there's still room to grow. And some additional work that has to be done, um, especially around V B S D and, and private schools. But if we're going, we're going to put it in that topic, the, the emergency preparedness, I would absolutely encourage us to take resiliency and firehardening. Put it into a priority and something that we address sooner, there's also home hardening, um, and mitigation issues that. We have had, we're having another drawing in term, we probably have another base for predictions on a wet spring, I think these are all for um open space. Um, and to, we, we have, we do have wildfire mitigation on there, we should also have, like, maybe. When it's on the work plan for these guys, and it's, and we don't have something specifically, like, we've pieced out a lot of stuff going forward, we should have like a better comprehensive. Barrow plan, given this is not changing, these are going to be risks every year, I can press, um, but if we can bring fire hardening and the emergency preparedness. Soon, make it a priority, I think the residents have, are asking us to make this a priority for that. Creating a safer environment through maybe modified wood code, if you will, um, or home hardening, to help people in, in like the. The perimeter neighborhoods, that will keep the rest of our community safe, there's a lot of statistical evidence for that, this will also help with. Insurance issues, so we're seeing this across the country in fire prone areas, we're now considered a high fire danger area. So if we can bring this a priority to help people, I mean, everything's getting more expensive, we've got new homes going in where people can't get insurance or having to find new insurers. Then this is going to be systemic, so if we can maybe bring this up for discussion sooner rather than later, it would be a big help to the whole city.
Are you? Given our discussion, are you suggesting moving one M to a three eight H?
Yes.
Are you, and, and, I, I think basically what you're suggesting is. What, that's, so, thoughts? Other thoughts?
I, I agree that it should be moved up in priority, uh, I also think there could be a. More cooperation, and the consortium of cities is doing a lot. Uh, for evacuation procedures and. For. Just emergency notification systems, whatever, they've already arranged. Potentially with Boulder County to evacuate. Was the Spanish Hills through the enclave, through the mesa to. Down to Macatlin, yes, well, not through enclave, so south of. But through the bases so that they have, because they currently only can evacuate to South Full Road. And this would give them a way to go south at least. So adding things like that into this, the resiliency fire, I think, thing would also be good. Emergency, emergency of any kind, not just fire.
One. Well, let me hear more. I, I'm supportive of, of moving this up, I, I personally would like to see it pretty well defined, so we know. It's such a big topic, um, and I think one consideration of some type of woodie code. Would be an item, I think that open space needs an item. But trying to make it concrete, just given how many other priorities we have on the list that are sort of abstract. So that we can.
This should be in check off, I mean, like, this is one of those topics where I think we can really work well together to come up with an actual list of. Like, hey, we got this, we got this, and we have the whole staff to, you know, for the best suggestions of how to proceed with it, and get our community as safe as possible. I know that the residents would really like to see that be it.
You're, just to clarify, um, America, are you suggesting we include the resiliency fire hardening? Woody code. Modified or otherwise, that that's not specific enough, you would want it to be more specific?
I, I'd like to sort of have it at the, at the level of what kind of. Policy solution are we talking about, I mean, resiliency fire hardening, we've got a lot of different things, I think, for different people.
I, I'm not sure I would necess, well, resiliency, I think, actually. Fire hardening is pretty well.
You're just saying like bullet point the three things we just said.
Yeah, like, I, I just, I wanted to be concrete, given, given the number of all the things that are, it's the resiliency piece, that's like. That's an abstract idea.
That would be in favor of moving it up, possibly retitling it as emergency preparedness. And this year, those are the three bullet points we want to check off, and, you know, we also have the train track that was stood here. And that could be an emergency, so I think if we expand. The umbrella to emergency preparedness, including for, these are the four streets that specific emergency preparedness pockets. Apple, but maybe next year we could do something else. Like, there's so many different things, this is.
And like make fire hardening one of those pieces.
I'm wondering, is that, I mean, and I take your point. Is it emergency? I mean, um, emergency, I guess I've never brought up wood code as being emergency preparedness, I think of preparedness as. Communications and evacuation plan and, uh, you know, campus ride and stuff like that. Or if staff has any thoughts about this or?
It feels like there's hardening, and then there's preparedness. I don't want to say, but there are different harms kind of, how you build, push, ensure, and preparednesses, actions, or plans you're going to take during. And I'll tease it out.
It, it, at least in my view, the fire hardening pieces, the one that. I heard a lot of feedback on, this is, this is time sensitive, if we need to get to it sooner rather than later. Maybe we should have got to it already, but we haven't, but.
Let me ask, um, on preparedness, generally, emergency preparedness. Is that, is that an ongoing, I mean, that's something that we've already undertaken, I don't know that it's, I'm not sure it's listed. In quite that way. Down below, I don't. So you're, you're thinking of them as really different, I mean, you know, in some respects, they're fire issues, but preparedness is all. You know, I'll forget, uh, active shooter, it's floods, it's violence, all kinds of different things, so. If you can't limit it to fires, that's the one that is, is um current a. Time sensitive.
And a lot of the preparation that's going into that, and like with that focus, is going to help us, uh, as a community on any, any disaster, you know. Polygone situations, all of that, um, this actually sparked conversation with, um, the N S F Railway, and how do we deal with something like that in our community? How do we prevent block road, and we do have emergency evacuations, so all of that is underway, um, and Boulder County and. City of Louisville are definitely working on those topics, or at least that it's, but it's not reflected, you're right, and that is something that's been done.
I wonder, let me suggest something and see what directors of power think about it, what if this is? Sort of thinking about wooey code and. He's potentially private, is that? It's more than just land use, but is that something that would fit? Neatly or not so neatly into the one H, or excuse me, two H. Which is the strategic land use provisions.
I don't think so in the context that's, I think that was created, I think it's a separate, in my mind, they're separate. And I, I do think that the wooey code, so as I'm hearing it, jumping about what does the city. What do we control with our own policy, or say, first, what, I mean, county maybe, and then we're just a partner in. And I think some of the, like, evacuation and things like that, that's largely. Administered, controlled through county, possible management, we have a role in it, but we're not. From a council, like, what the council will, you might just get a presentation and have questions and input, but you're not adopting policies or ordinance. I think it's very different, would be looking at potential local city policy and ordinance. So I see those, that resiliency piece, like, how do you deal with train accident? That's good for you to know what's happening, and maybe ask questions, give us some direction to state manager. Um, to make sure everybody's comfortable, you're not necessarily adopting all ordinance. So you might look at, that might be a reason to look at resiliency, or the management, and stuff like that. I know that was your question.
Also, the wooey code would fall under wildfire mitigation under three H.
So that's all open space, it's just subsets of open space.
So you, you're interested in doing wooey code for residences?
Yeah, residential, so home hardening.
Yeah, which would be.
Modified.
Which, which could be city, I mean, that could take, I mean, there could be actual code ordinances that require building in a certain way.
Right.
Uh, but I think the existing building stock, interesting question, um, and probably more impactful. Overall, the city is how can we maybe address the building stock in different ways as well, so it's, it's a big topic. I think we'll be talking about it more than this year, so I think it's, are there some, what, what's timely for this year, maybe?
So that's, that's the reason I want to bring it up, as a priority, so that the things that we can impact immediately will, you know. Will be effective for the, versus waiting another year, and, you know, so things that maybe can impact some deconstruction that's going in. Um, and long term, could be, uh, education, or people who have existing homes, they're wanting to make modifications, and it's like, oh. So what would be, you know, home hardening side, aside of like, oh, I don't want to do like wood shingles, I want to do. The Hardy Ford or the cement shasiding that looks like a little, you know, that kind of thing, because some people don't know, or, oh, what's the perimeter that I shouldn't put plants around my house? That's the kind of long term discussion, the short term could be, these are things with like implemented with new construction.
And I think it's a question of what is happening, that's going to be one of the biggest things that's really hard for you all to grapple with in the community. Because typically you deal with the edge, and there's a question of do you go beyond the edge? I'm debating about that right now, with how, so, place, how far do you go? So it's a big, it's a big, big topic. So it's a big, it's a big, big topic. Has, has it had big impacts?
It would be to almost do such a large change.
Yeah, I appreciate some of your most recent comments. One, one, one of the things I was kind of thinking about is. I, I think there's just super high priorities. I was thinking about like, um. Emergency preparedness, right? It's like, what I'm trying to. Just take a step back. This is our camp, city council work, right? And so I think there's, there's, for me, it's like, um. Public safety is important, but it's not like tie up on our council work plan because. We have a police chief that understands that and is doing it. So like, like really good evacuation plans, communication is super, super important. But as a council, what work do we have to do? In that direction? Cause I'm not drawing up evacuation plans. I'm not, you know, like the, and this is what I was leading to earlier is that like. If we've given clear direction and policy that this is really important. It's not, I want to say simply, our work here is done. Right now staff kind of, uh, landing thing, staff understands that that's what we're trying to do. So county's working on. Uh, emergency preparedness, right? So there's departments like, yeah, yeah, this is really important, but I don't know that. Is something that council needs to spend a lot of meeting time working on. It's just something that. Staff needs to be working with people to make sure it's happening. So it's like, it's just weird. Like I agree, it's super important. Don't know where it belongs here. And, and with the fire hardening. I'm just wondering, so let's. Like if we were to throw, okay, fire hardening is actually one H. Get it up there. It is the most important thing. My question is, how are we? Genuinely prepared to address that? And, and I'm trying to be careful because as Mayor pointed out, we're not trying to have a substantive conversation of. What we should do at fire hardening tonight. The question is, should we have a conversation about what we should do about fire hardening soon? And my concern is we decided a couple of years ago. That putting on WUWE code requirements of the rebuilds. Wasn't, uh, palatable. The, the, the cost of rebuild was so much that we were actually like. Decreasing building codes, not increasing. And it was a really tough thing. It's like. Oh my God, how are we going to rebuild in the fire burn area not? To like a WUWE code. And I think what's interesting about that area is, and you've experienced this with your neighbors, many people, it's, it's the most. Fire hardened construction. Of homes we have in our community and not with the WUWE code, just because my God, these people lost their home from the fire. So a lot of people are doing some more fire hardening things. Without a code. So are we talking about? Trying to put a WUWE code on the Marshall fire rebuilds? Cause I don't know if that's where we're trying to go. And as Rob was saying. Actually, if you wanted to do like retrofitting of the borders of our town with more fire hardened homes. Talk about like taking their fences down, changing their landscaping, changing their siding, like then you have a major impact. But like. Are we about to roll out a policy in twenty twenty four of? Of fire hardening, the standing home, the, the, the other housing stock? And is that something that we have? The time of day, or are we making a policy or making incentive program? Are we giving education? And I think if you get to the education piece. Now is this a high council priority of like, hey, make sure we educate people on options. But if we're doing a WUWE code. Retrofit for standing homes, that is absolutely going to be a lot of council work. Like lots of meetings, lots of public engagement. So I just, what I want to be careful of is. I, I've been, I've been on council for years and sometimes I make the mistake of like, sure, I'm fine having that conversation. I totally disagree with where we're going. And when we have that conversation, I'll say no. But it's a good conversation to have. And my saying, yeah, let's have that conversation. Makes it sound like I'm interested in doing that, but I'm not. So I'm not necessarily interested in a WUWE code. But I'd be happy to be having a conversation this year about why I'm not interested in a WUWE code. I just don't want to get confused that like, that's something I think we should be doing. This year. So I'm, I'm conflicted. Kurt has his hand up. I don't know if it, if it will help our.
I was going to say bring you back to the roles and like light analogy. It seems like. You should take what we've heard here, involve other people in the city where their responsibility or these things. Your first step is we show up at a venue of here and things you could think of around with, or think we heard. And then you can say, yes, no, yes, yes. And then everyone's clear where we're going. That may be a good next step, because it is a big broad topic with a lot of stakeholders.
I'll actually add to, you know, we have a new recovery and resilience division. It's new to the organization. We're planning a council study session in Q one to provide some updates, which might give some clarity here to the. I think it's a work. It's regular name, regular. Council session.
Other, other thoughts?
I, I was actually just going to, um, kind of. Do some clarification on like each other, like the week or I think those are actually three different things. So it's. Um, there's WUWE for standing homes, right? When we can implement WUWE. So if somebody wants to go ahead and take down a house and rebuild. Then those WUWE codes apply based on where they are in the community. There's also. You want to, if you're taking down a fence and putting up a new one, then you know, like the wings that connect it to your home. Cannot be, or whatever it is, like those, like that's the kind of, it's where it's modified. It's not like mountain wildfire WUWE that we think of. It's, you know, wildland urban interface, but it's. Modified to fit this community. And so we can make tweaks like that in a way. So it doesn't have to be so broad. And we can do what we've done with other things, which is give Marshall fire rebuilds specifically, if it is the homeowner rebuilding. And opt out, I would say that most are opting in. There have been incentive programs already put in place, money that goes to them to help them do this. The city did not have to spend on. And this is, this would impact, I think, the most. Are going to be approximately twenty five to thirty percent of rebuilds that are not being done by homeowners, by the people who've lost their home in the Marshall fire. Whether that's production builders or people who are buying lots of rebuilds. It would be asking them to step up and put these measures in place that we, like with guidance staff, feel would help. Improve the safety of the whole community. So we're not specifically saying to Marshall fire people, oh, we have a greater expense for you here. It's voluntary, but if you did not and want to rebuild them here, these are, that's what we need to do to help. We do that for, um, climate change. And you could say that this is even a subset of climate change that we don't want another massive fire because talk about toxins and. Pollution and everything and what we ponder and what it costs to rebuild it on, on a, on a climate. That, that's a part of this preventing another massive disaster. Right? That's the only reason I was thinking maybe we could put it in there. And it can be that tweaking that conversation can help ease some of the concerns about. The different areas and how we factor.
Wonder. Feeling to our, um. Lakers. What do you suggest?
My suggestion would be, if we could, to. Maybe we, maybe we make it very specific to fire hardening, hopefully residential fire hardening and leave out the resiliency piece to, because it's such a broad topic. And make it a higher priority for us. Like put it up there with the open space wildfire mitigation. So make it, you know, like four H or something. So that it's something that we do work on and have a conversation about sooner versus later. With the housing component, because it's.
I, I will, I will just say, I think the numbers before the H are, they're not.
The numbers don't need some, they're just the key age.
Big bucket, anything that bucket.
C H. I like you guys.
Um, other thoughts? On, anybody else? Cause I, I want to chime in a little bit. Um. I think, um, this one, this one is hard because what fries out to me, uh, is. Um, have fire related issues. Even though that's probably not the right way to pick the bottle. There is, uh, urgency. Um, around certainly fire. And I don't know whether that's going to necessarily involve policy. Or, uh. It, it certainly sounds healthy. Because if we're going to require people to do things. That's ordinance. Right? And if they let people opt out of those, that's exceptionally difficult. So, um. I'm, I guess I, I, I'm concerned that by just. Uh, just doing, just putting fire hardening in there may be a little too narrow. I, I guess. I want to go back for just a second and figure out what we would prepare. Because preparedness is a, is really, I, I think we've got a consensus around that and seeing. Broader than just fire. It's, and I would, I would disagree that it's something the county is doing and that's it. I think that the overwhelming, my view, overwhelming view of. Uh, certainly what I've heard of fire survivors is that we need something in Louisville to deal with these issues. Independent or inner, both interdependent and inter, and, and not dependent on. On what the county's doing. Um. So I guess, and, and those efforts I think are underway. I mean, I don't know that that's something that's really new. I think that's. Is that right?
Yeah.
So that issue, we may be able to. You know, uh, I don't want to say cheap, but we may still could put it in, you know, maybe its own or a new. Annual ongoing item, whatnot. But we could put it down there because it's already been something that we're doing. Yeah, go ahead.
The, the county is working on, um. Emergency response. Not mitigation or preparedness, so, so to speak. So they're, they're not trying to prevent a fire or a flood or. A train derailment or whatever. They're improving their. Response. So evacuations and notifications and things like that. So that's totally different from mitigation.
Yeah, and I, I, I understand the term. I think I understand the station. When I'm thinking of preparedness. I'm, I'm thinking of. Communication and evacuation and return to the city and that sort of thing. Um, because I think. That, if I'm understanding it correctly, just setting, set aside mitigation. Set aside fire. I think the emergency preparedness that. It's the way I'm using that term. I thought it was the right way and I may be back. It encompasses those other. These to try to.
And that's what the county is doing.
Yeah, but I think the community, I think Louisville and Superior are working on that, maybe with the county. I, I need some help with.
The whole consort of cities is working.
Yeah, I need some help with staff.
Yeah.
I do, I'm waiting to tell them here. I, I would, I would strongly suggest we add it as an item to regional partnerships. Which is already in the. Really, all of them. Um, and that is.
And the city is working on. Um, like the, one of the, one of the components of this is like the sirens system in the city. Um, so the fire department and the police department have worked together with the city. To come up with like an additional, uh, alarm system. So it's not, the sirens is not just for tornadoes now. It's all to be for. Like wildfires as well. And they will start testing and doing things and getting community engagement. They are working on those things. This is the, the Louisville kind of independent piece that you will. And I'll wait to make sure that this specifically city has some of those things covered in place. But to your point, asking for follow up. So that like. Cause if we know, there's be a lot of residents who know, because they'll be listening to what. Be updated that we're getting. And that's probably just in itself a reason to put in our book sometimes to say. Could we have our chief of police and chief of fire come and give us an update? He can tell us. And then maybe we think, ooh. This could, it's a little more needed to it. And that's where the involvement of council comes. I'm just a suggestion.
Yeah, I, I, I look. To that, where we. You're proposing that because I want to go back to.
Yeah, I like his.
I, I think the regional partnerships, at least. That sort of assumes that we have something going ourselves at best. And then we're partnering with somebody else, but I. We could, I, I would just suggest we put in there. Not just Marshall fire recovery, I would put as a separate category entirely. Emergency preparedness or how parents.
I think I understand the discussion tonight. Update this.
All right, good. Um. I, I'm not sure I quite understand where we embark on the, uh. The fire hardening. WUWE code.
I may. My understanding is we'd like to put that in eight H.
Okay.
We'd like to make sure we've got the preparedness covered in this work plan, like interregional partnerships. And then we've also got an update coming from our recovering resilience division, which will provide a lot of updates on what we're doing in this.
And where in that, uh, are you including, if at all? Ma- modified. WUWE code.
Eight H.
Eight H. It's, it's, okay. Now, the, I'll ask one last question, which is.
Sure.
Do we want to expand? Top priorities from seven to eight? Or do we want to replace? Demote another, if you will. And it's, that's a bad term. Do we want to? Create only seven top ends? And, uh.
I don't think there's any magic to seven.
Okay. But let's.
Can I get comment from staff about my com- my, my very first comment saying. Open space management, I need to understand what as a council person I will be asked of in twenty twenty four. Cause I feel like if staff doesn't understand what we want, I'm shocked. So like, what's going to come before us is like. Choices or policy or what is the potential for our interaction with staff around, for instance, wildfire mitigation?
Yeah, I'm not an expert on this. I know we are working on some, we've got our, our assessment, our wildfire risk assessment or implementation plans for that. I also know that we are looking at the possibility of some master plans around this work. And so council would be engaged in contracting and scoping process. As we move through the council plan.
Okay.
Certainly something we could, um, bring back. I think you've got an update. For council plans coming up. I can certainly check that date.
Okay. Yes, that, yeah, we've got a focus space.
Yeah, right. I mean, right now we're working through the plan that you've already reviewed. We're increasing our raising. We're looking at. Relocating areas where we're doing fire mitigation mowing work. So really we're just following the guidance from the existing plan that came forward for this year. Um, and we prioritize the areas based on hybris. Right, there's areas on the east flank that are probably still wearing my wind. So right at this point, we're just implementing what we're doing. We're also backing up the mitigation efforts to fit the heights. So making sure we're doing mitigation coupled with good responsible land stewardship. So we're. Collaborating within our C S to do raising fans and look at those issues. So at this point, we're just carrying out the actions.
Are you, does that help you?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, it doesn't feel to me like. Again, I think this is, this is so hard to. This is very important. It just doesn't seem like a lot of council work on this topic. So it's, it's important. I just don't think it's, I think it could be, you know, three N instead of three H because. We have set the stage and they might have to come back to us for some other pieces, but like. The money is there, the direction is there, the people are there, the, the work is ongoing. And so I don't think this is like. Something I'm expecting us to spend a lot of our time on this year.
Other thoughts? Yes.
So we created this prior to passing the two C. So I, I hear your point, Mayor Proton, and I'm, and I'm wondering, I don't know, I'm going to rely on the expert staff for this. If actually. The budget versus and that, I mean, should take, should be our list. Do we have to pass? That or are we involved in that part? Rather than agriculture, all these things, those videos that we're already doing. So certainly reflect that. Yeah, like should we? Say scratch these bullet points, some of that, but we're already doing it. Is there something related to the budget to see that requires work from the D I S instead? I don't really answer to that.
If I can tell you the answer, yes. The answer is going to be yes. I mean, there's, there's some. There will be some.
That will be handled through the budget.
Yes.
Uh, separate.
I'm, I mean, I, I think, I think this. To take this out of the top priority would, I think, would be. I don't know, it would be a real.
I should clarify, I guess I'm not saying to take it out. I'm just saying to like sub bullet points adjusted to reflect the work that's already being done and maybe. Should there, maybe there's a lot of capacity to see that actually require.
And do you have a suggestion?
I don't, I, I'm just throwing out the broad, I love. And seeing what others.
Being a budget, there's budget. But, uh, you know, we just, I think you could, I'm too seen and we'll get sales tax implementation. And then maybe we want to change our time estimate and add needed to one meeting. Um, to, to Kevin's point, that is not anticipating. Um, to to Caleb's point, that is not anticipating.
Because wasn't that something that um? That Director Blackmore told us that, but that or left meeting, he he was discussing now that it's passed and the and the change in the budget. And how this is gonna affect parks. It was a a big piece where open space is gonna have a lot more. Uh, funding and the parks are not, and we're gonna have a very big conversation about that. How which things get. You know, like we need to run the general fund into parks or change what we do. With the open space, I mean, if there are mitigation costs, for example, like whether like putting sister inside on open spaces, we have the ability, our department has the ability to put out fires. And that requires more money and then you come up with a, yeah, and now we have it. So again, to everyone's point, that's part of budget. So like, is the allocation of those tasks, which has to be a discussion here?
Um, other thoughts?
I would agree with Dietrich and.
Pardon me?
I would agree with you to that, just an item. A one meeting item for implementation of tasks.
I still have an idea.
There you two over here.
I I I guess I'm I'm a little, I I'm skeptical that we're gonna be able to tell. A priority item like open space may or may not be in one meeting, but I'm willing to go along. Live that more than one meeting more than.
Pardon me?
One meeting and more is needed. I I mean.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I understand. Yeah, I I. At least we need at least one.
I I'm fine in saying one meeting or one or two and then. You know, it'll be what it turns out to be. And some of it is gonna get folded into budget and some of it's gonna be told. There's some of the other discussions about mitigation. Um, but we can put, we. Should for one meeting, I'm fine with that. So everybody, it sounds like it consists.
That mayor or ten. So I can start to get at what.
Yeah, I mean, I think the goal, right, when we're doing, when we're doing these work plans, not to overwhelm ourselves, well, overwhelm ourselves. And so for me, it's almost semantics. I don't think we're gonna spend a lot of time on this. So I'm totally happy with us adding an eight H because I think three H is. Not. A big lift for council. I think it's a big lift for staff. They're doing a ton of work. But I don't think they're gonna come to us and make like, oh, hey, guys, do you want us to do wildfire mitigation? Like, yes, like, I don't think they have a lot to come to us for. Now, the budget is huge, like deciding what to do with this budget and how it's allocated and understand that that is part of the budget process. But the question isn't, should we do wildfire mitigation? There's maybe not a more important topic to our residents. So it's like. We'd love the word stand up. It's just a, we're absolutely focused on that. Um, so I'm buying it in there. I think it won't be a ton of our time. And and so that's positive as we're moving um preparedness up into there and maybe hardening up into there. That it's almost in my mind, combined a little bit with the open space, they're both to me a lot around fire mitigation and. And what what we're doing to to um not just placate our residents, but to to have them feel like we're addressing. The potential risk of a future uh. Fire, really, I mean, that wildfire mitigation sort of fire. Um, so uh, I'm I'm happy. Thank you for asking, Barbara. I'm. I'm happy for you. I'm happy to move on.
We can roll with the staff at the.
Staff at the direction.
Direction, good. Um, so.
We got rid of one of our meeting.
We have, we have, uh, I think we finished. Our first. Well, maybe not. I I'd like to at least raise for discussion and um I don't know if it's. In the high medium or low, right now it's in low, but we continue to get feedback from D B A and others. About in March to November or sometime, whatever you wanna call it, closure, urban closure, Main Street to vehicle traffic. Um, and I I'd be curious when we take the temperature of the room on whether that. Merits increasing with the environment or something else. Let me, let me make a friendly moment in your thing.
It's your suggestion.
Is. Uh. Maybe the first question is, um, well, let's 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 just take. What what, how do people feel about? The closure, just start with that.
I would like to wait until the citizen survey has been taken and we give themselves back from that. And I know that the D B A and the business community want. Their most recent survey was in favor of closure. But we don't have the residents input on whether or not they want the closure. So I'd like to have both of those pieces of information.
Remind me when the citizen survey is going out.
That's a great question. We're working on the timing right now. Uh, typically, that would be out March. One of the things we're trying to be thoughtful of is there's a lot of complaint engagement that could be going out at the same time. So. That's something that I'm I'm working through, one of the best timing for that.
It might slip, you know.
Might slip to April.
It's not going to be moved out.
Not likely.
Okay, and that's, that raises the problem of having to add. One way or another earlier on this request. It's. April. It's coming uh and either we'll have a closure or we won't.
And keep in mind, a typical March release for survey means results for council in May. Because there's time that's out of the process.
Same matter of what, that would be too late.
Yeah, so does that change your to your view?
I guess it changes my view for this year. Yes, but I would still like it to be part of the resident. Survey. To find out for future years, do you like it? Do you not want it?
Very.
So I just wanna, let me just make sure I'm clear. I mean, you wanna have the results of the survey, people will decide whether it's a high burden work plan item? Or you wanna have the results of the survey before we talk about it?
And that's not gonna happen.
Yeah, it's, yeah. It's, I think, weren't you suggesting that? If the issue comes up next year. We will have gotten some feedback and that might be useful next year's decision.
So the discussion for this year, we're not gonna have the results of the survey. One way or the other, we're gonna have to make a decision on our own. Um, and but for next year, we will have survey from the residents and the survey from the businesses. So we can make a decision going forward.
So that means you agree with moving it um to a higher priority, so then we we do have a conversation to make a decision.
Right. We do get that question into the survey and.
And I have two questions here. Let me try and untangle.
Yeah.
Okay.
What is, is this an item that we wanna discuss on the work plan? Do you wanna put it on the work plan? And if so, what priorities of? And the second question is, what's the timing um based on the review of the survey results? It doesn't, we have to talk about it a little bit, so.
Yeah, I um. Think priority is interesting, the the conversation priority. I mean, I think whether this is high medium or low. So soon you leave it in low priority. Well, if we're going to do it, it still needs to be like now. So even as a low priority item for twenty twenty four, the timing of it is like, oh, well, we'll work on the summer closure in the fall. Like, it just doesn't make sense. So even if it's a low priority, we have to decide whether we're going to deal with this low priority issue or not. Like immediately, because if we want to have a good conversation, so like just, if we wanna close it in April. Then we'll have to have made really good plans by March to do that. So we would have to engage between. January ninth and beginning of March, like really the next seven, eight weeks uh with. You know, say the the E B C, the D B A, the chamber, the residents, Lafarge. R T D, like all the things that staff would need to do to get good information for us to make a decision, right? So like, we wouldn't like bring this to council next week and say, yes, do the closure. Like, we'd actually have some work to do. So I think, I think. I'm fine moving it to medium. I'm fine leaving leaving it in low, but I think it's something we should address. And I think the only way to address it is to address it. Immediately, not urgently, but just immediately, um, so that we have time to have a fruitful conversation. We got an email. Uh, today from a resident with, you know, concerns about it. We need to be able to talk to residents about how they feel about it. Maybe not with the resident survey, but at least. With some public engagement with our residents to see what's the up to. I mean, it was very well received in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. Uh, by the residents and by the businesses and was also and had a negative impact on some of our residents as well. So we know some of this, like we lived through it. Uh, and so the city knows how to do the closure. It was incredibly successful as far as it, the first year was kind of ah, and the second year, we figured out the emergency. Um, access and we did a lot of improvements and there'll be more, more improvements potentially to do. But so anyways, I don't disagree. I think it's. An important topic that I would like to take up. As a council. Appropriately, soon, um. Yeah, it's it's a key one. Top, I mean, there's only one time to do this. It's key one, so.
Unless we're having discussion for twenty twenty four, not for tw- or twenty twenty five, instead of twenty twenty four.
We're not talking about twenty twenty five. Wait, let me, let me put a, sorry, let me, sorry, to be to speak for you, but let me try and put a finer point on that, which is. If if we were considering a closure for twenty twenty five, then it still makes sense as a twenty four work for them. Say, starting Q three, Q four, once we have the survey results, we can dial it in. We can do a lot of stakeholder. I'm partial to Caleb's proposal, but I think there's an alternative where we spend the second half of this year trying to do it as thoughtfully as possible. Looking at the survey results, talking to as many people as we can, working with R T D, so that we have something in the beginning part of twenty five. And you know, I, there may be. I don't know what the outcome would be, but what if there's stuff that needs to be purchased and installed, arrangements made and you really wanna be starting that. A couple of months.
It could just, it could end up being something that's substantially more successful. If we get more thought and more time and be finding out like, oh, let's add this in, the city should do this or buy these things. There should be composting disposables, there's, you know, for people, we're gonna be outside of perhaps to keep our zero waste um. Portion for our city, which I I think a lot of people probably like that we do that. So these are all. I think there's so many moving parts that we will miss. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it this year. I'm just saying, I think there's a lot of moving parts we're trying to miss if we do it this year versus get them all and get it right. And make it, make it a super success and then we keep working with it. I'm wondering if we're rushing and like. And we'll, we won't do it right if we're rushing. I don't.
I I don't disagree. I mean, I think I I think that. Some people, right, some people are interested in permanent closure. My God, we would not be doing that this summer. That would be a huge conversation with response to stakeholders, like that would change. The way Main Street is, right? So so that's the kind of conversation that. Wow, I mean, that's a, that's a big one. Um, we have closed. Uh, Main Street like this twice before, like. I I'm not trying to oversimplify staff's work, but like, we know how to do this and it went really well and there might be a few little tweaks that we can improve on, but like. The 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 structure for how to do it is there. Um, so I think there's a little bit of like, I mean. Yeah, we're not, this, we're not having such a conversation, right? But we could say tonight, oh, yeah, let's go ahead, do it. And then staff's like, great, we're on it. And they don't need anything else from us. I don't think that's the right way to do it. We need to have a bigger conversation. But I don't think it's like a six month lead time and staff, I'm sorry, you can obviously. Give give your feedback from public works to other pieces, like how complicated is this is from implementation perspective? But I think if in March, we decide, yeah, I wanna do this in April, then it's like, okay, we'll do it in April. And if, am I wrong there or is that, what what's the lead time that you guys need?
I think what we're trying to discuss is whether we need one or two meetings about this topic. I mean, one right away in Q one to decide if we're gonna do it this year. And then one maybe in Q three or four to, well, three, I think. To see if we're going to do it in following years and if so, how and are we gonna improve it?
Let's let's float out. Hold on, timeout, timeout. We have several different, we have.
I really agree. Um, there's. There's still an issue, I mean, the issue of, you know, potentially, I haven't heard the issue sort of planned for two thousand. Twenty five, even twenty four, but that's an interesting. You know, I idea. Um, that doesn't sound like a low priority. That sounds like a sort of racist level of it, but I I think those, that's a, that's sort of. One way of thinking about it. Another is just dealing this year with the summer. Um, and. How many meetings? Let's wait for just a second. I think, I think you're probably right, but let's just understand. What it is that we wanted to with. The shorter run issue, because I think it is. It's, this is something to Caleb's point. You can call it a low priority or you can call it a major priority, but. If it's gonna be on the list for decision. We gotta do it soon. So. Thoughts around. Planning for two thousand twenty four and twenty five? Are people interested in that? Are people not wanting to do that?
I'd like to address it this summer. I I don't wanna tell our residents like, oh, it's a good idea. We'll get to that in eighteen months. I get. I I know that four months comes up quick for us in our pace, but to say like. Well, yeah, absolutely. We'll have a conversation for a year and a half from now, just seems like. That that to me, I'm not saying you shouldn't have a deeper conversation about next year later, but I think we're capable of having a conversation. And the answer could be no. That's it. I mean, we understand, like, the answer might be no to this year, but we need to get to a no. Or a yes by March, I would think.
Yeah, I I wasn't, I think you were talking about potentially waiting. I I don't get the standard. Or hearing. So far that there's consensus around. At least that conversation. Remember, we're not making decisions. We're just giving staff direction about what the work plan is. Do we want to cover this? If we're gonna cover this for the summer.
That's why I come back to my original question, which is as a sort of fundamental matter policy of the high priority for us and I. I think I'm hearing that it is a high priority. It is, it is, yeah. Um. And then there's the the question of. The timing, I I agree with Caleb that we should make some decision relatively early in Q one. About what's going to be the status quo going into the summer. Is the status quo going to be closure? Is the status quo going to be like this today? And and then I think there is a a a second conversation that happens after you see the citizen survey. We'll probably, if we were to close it, we'd get one more year of experience under our belts of of how people like this. Um, and then at some point, whether it's late twenty four or twenty five. But you know, the the conversation happens again, maybe add a little more detail, longer terms, level, rather than just deciding one year at a time. Others.
I like that. Yeah, I think, I think to have the the longer. Uh, not even that permanent. But to have a like a broader, longer discussion beyond just this summer, we should engage other departments in our city, like. Our arts and culture department should be a participant in understanding this outside of just E B C. Because I think that they'll be a part of the success of it. And I think we probably don't have enough time to do that before.
Begin pretty far into weeks. This is just the discussion. I, let me make this suggestion. Um, and and I agree that. You know, I mean, it may be worth. Ten or fifteen seconds to talk about permanent closure, because I know I'm not sure about that at all, but. I think it's the idea of making this decision soon is a priority. I I wouldn't put it. And I, you know, I wish to try to stay within a fairly um. Uh, liquid. Um, kind of uh matrix that we've got going here. Um, where the distinctions between the categories aren't always. Fairly there, I I. Interpre- interpreting what. Interpreting what you would say. It, is it to perhaps making this. Um, uh, seasonal closure. Um, a medium priority with. You know, one to two meetings. Um, in the new plan, that satisfies me, especially if it's a medium priority that we get to.
And we may, we specify one meeting is in Q one and one is in Q four, yeah.
But maybe. Again, then it would, it may require two meetings in Q one to execute, but. We need to actually, we haven't decided to pursue a closure this summer. So we need to have a conversation about whether we want staff to spend time pursuing those options. And then they'll have to come back to us with what they, this is what we like to do. We have. And then they'll have to come back to us with what they, this is what we like to do, we have to say yes or no, so I think we need two meetings this.
Yeah.
Before the summer, one to say, go do this, and then two to say, good job on your idea and do this tweak to it, right? So, two year olds just. And then potentially if there'd be any, two, three, two, four about whether they wanna do this again next year, but that can be, get pushed to Q one, but I think this year would be good to. Not have.
I'm, I'm just gonna mention, looking at your agendas and what you have coming. Just as long as you're aware, if you make this a higher priority, it looks like we're probably gonna have to move things further back to Q two than we're scheduled for Q one, because. Things are just starting to pile up into March and I don't think you wanna meet for eight hours.
That would be true.
So just keep that in mind, it just pushes things around a little bit.
So maybe we should be sensitive about just shoving, moving things up, uh, willy nilly, let's. Or we, we have a consensus around, at least for the moment, raising the priority from, from low to medium. Uh, to, to talk about the closure and what options there are, um, math and then. Um, and then we can deal with the rest of them, that's, we're not ready to.
Is this an opportunity for, um, if we do have one of these meetings, we'd ask the schedule to have the DVA deliver a presentation for us in that first one to help us get it. Or did that have to wait until after we asked for staff to?
I think that's the kind of work that EDC could do, or compete with the DVA about their thing, and kind of do what we call, what we like to call the heavy lifting. Of getting their feedback and what they're talking about and doing a lot of work so that by the time it comes back to council, it's. Um.
And then a little final presentation, so I was just thinking the residents would probably love to see something like that, to get, to help them get excited and get behind it.
Yeah.
And without that information, because I think a lot of the residents are participating for these people. And it would be a great opportunity for all of us to know that our, and then, but that, is that something that we can arrange with that? I, I don't know how to do that, I know we're just setting priorities, I'm just thinking, it's the number of meetings and how do we do it?
I, I think I'm, I, it's a great point, and I think there's gonna be a need for all of that, I think we can figure out the details of it. Probably when we see, I will tell you that L R's, um, already has weighed in strongly in favor of this. And EBA has already presented. Uh, I think, in a couple of instances, to some of us, not all of us. Uh, by any means, and there may be more to do, but I'll leave that, I, I think that's not what we need, that it was kind of, just need to make sure we're. It's almost basically things to talk about as a council. They're not, okay, let's, um, move on to, um, other, we've got the other, um. The five currently, uh, two M through six M. Um, why not, let me, before we do this, it's about five to eight. Um, maybe let's take ten minute break. Exactly ten minutes, there shall be no more than ten minutes and no less than ten minutes. Uh, and we stop here at eight oh five. And then we'll start, and we can all be thrilled that we have, we think. That was the first eight priorities squared away, unless somebody proposes to move right another area. Thanks.
So.
I hope that wasn't fun. I hope that wasn't fun too, but I bet it will. But when we back on.
So many members.
And my understanding, well. If there are staff members online and because. If they want to chime in, I presume we can.
I would tell you to talk about.
All right, I just want to make sure. So so. One moment. All right, so. Because I'm still drinking and eating, I'm gonna take this off for just a second. Everybody's cool with that, all right. So we can be thankful that we're through maybe our first set of priorities, but. So let's talk about the ones that are listed as meeting priorities other than. Other than the one we've already elevated from below the meeting, yes.
Could I suggest, Sam had just given us a quick thirty seconds on each of these five. And again, kind of like what.
It's a great suggestion.
Sure.
Take your opinion too.
So we've got equity, diversity and inclusion, this is going to implement that blueprint that the committee has put together. Both with internal and external items, can tell you one of the things that our EDI program manager has been involved in this year is engaging with competent efforts to make sure that nation strategy is inclusive. As much of our community as it can be. We've got sustainability programs, as you might have seen, there are the five programs going on this year that they're now implementing, particularly with some of that back tax money, to grant programs and assistance programs. Hartz recreation open space departmental master plan, which is upcoming. Recreation amenities, including tennis, pickleball courts and multi-use fields, and then minimum wage adjustments, council has already approved in IGA to participate in. Five cities regionally and economic analysis and will be working on engagement for that.
And then to piggyback if you could describe, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but what those two to three meetings might entail, what one to two meetings might entail, why are those numbers there?
Sure, now I will caveat this, that I was not here when this plan was originally developed, so I can give you my best estimate here, and other people can certainly chime in. Equity diversion inclusion, this is something that I understand we try to bring to council pretty regularly to check in on. The council recommendations that were made, things like holiday policies, why can't we have a luncheon meeting around holidays that might not be designated federal holidays, but are. Important for our community. So that could be a meeting, just a general update could be a meeting and checking with council. Sustainability programs will plan to bring community decarbonization as a meeting, for example. We could also have a sustainability update meeting if council desired that. Heart recreational departmental open space, or open space departmental master plan. That will require some effort by council to approve contracts, for example, as well as get a. Few of that planned, so those will be a couple of things. The minimum wage adjustments, council had a meeting late last year, I believe, to just to talk about whether you want to participate this, council's already approved at IGA. There'll be a meeting when we have data back from engagement as well as the study to give council additional information. Council may decide in which direction then, they may ask for another meeting to follow up in which direction at each time.
Two questions. Did you leave to skip over recreation amendments?
No. I did not mean to skip over recreation, thank you for catching them. Tensile pickleball courts, multi-use fields, we know this has been something that is of interest in our community. I believe the meeting there is as needed, because council can identify a priority as, I'm often certainly staff members' priorities from council.
I've got one question. What is the difference between seven eight and three?
The three and sustainability programs, seven eight of climate change greenhouse gas reductions initiative. My assumption here is that the climate change greenhouse gas reduction initiative is specifically focused on the decarbonization plans, both internal decarbonization and community decarbonization. Whereas the medium priority sustainability programs might be more. Other programs, the sustainability games, the back tax programs.
So those aren't, those aren't overlapping, so they're.
I don't believe so.
Do we have a hand in the air?
Sounds great, they're not, they're.
Okay. Those kind of things, saying that the open space departmental master plan is different than the open space management issue of three H, it's like, it's not, not quite the same.
Four M is a full pro master plan, it's part of the group.
Medium priorities. I guess I would say. One thing I would agree that it, at least it's the hope that the equity diversity inclusion, something that comes back to council. I, I guess, want to register my concern that it really has a. Come back to council, I can't even remember the last time Laine attended a meeting, and she did once.
I do remember an update was.
But it's been a while.
Late, late summer or early fall.
Yeah, certainly something we can put on the radar.
Something just need to, I think, be aware of, because. It's now been two years. And an update about where we stand on the task force items. And I just want to, I just want to flag that just as a common. Sam on your, on your common things, that is.
Just, just going on EDI again. Kind of giving Laine a chance to come and tell us what she has accomplished, how things have changed and improved. Because she's accomplished a lot in the short time that she's been here, and how can we help her move forward? And what would she like to do that she hasn't yet, that she might need our approval for? So. Because we do want her to be involved in everything we do.
I, I think another piece of that, and this may be a. I guess I just want to throw it out, you know. It's. You think EDI efforts around the country have come under fire? And I don't want to get into a discussion about that, except to say that some very good work has been done. To, um, yeah, or on responding to that as well. Attorney General has an opinion out about that, for example, and there are other, you know. So that may be something. That. The city attorney might weigh in on as a sort of general policy issue. It may be something that, I mean, that I'll just sort of throw that out, but I don't think we need to necessarily. Include any additional language, I guess. These are all. You know, one, one liners. I think the suggestion. I pretend that Sam described. Good, I don't think that helps us, but. I do wonder, are we comfortable with a level of specificity, if we are. Great.
I am, I mean, I think, I think these are all good, I, I, it's actually, I guess, we, we did go through a process, so I'm not, I shouldn't be surprised that like. This makes sense to me, like, but the, I think these are really well placed as medium parties, and things are really are planned and doing, a lot of it is reactionary from the council perspective, things are kind of, and we're gonna. You know, give our opinion on, on ideas, the, you know, the recreational amenities, basketball courts, all these fields, obviously we have boards that, what I like about this is. This is communicating to person rec board, dig into this, like, look into this, what, you know, what are, that's where we need your help, and then we react to what that board is, is doing. So I, I think these are all good, I wouldn't move any of them down or up, to be honest with you, so I'm, I'm pretty happy where they sit, and again, to specificity, I don't think we need to in this document, I'm satisfied.
Any other comments? Well, that was really bad.
I may make a recommendation.
Yeah.
You started off the conversation with maybe focusing on exceptions, since we've got to the low point and not any of the ongoing items. Maybe instead of going through each of those, we just want to talk about if there are any exceptions.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's true, I mean, are there, are there concerns, I think we. We blew it, man, but if. Are there. Are there any in the low priority, don't need to talk anymore about the hybrid filter. Right, no, but.
Are we leaving that as a low priority?
In, no. I guess one, one question. Well, first, are, is everybody comfortable with the other four, being where they are? Any specificity lacking? Do you want to, would you, well, we don't need to. Does anybody have any question about the, any of these items at all?
Yes.
Just because I wasn't here for the specifics, and what is the communication marketing automation software conversation that needs to come up for us, is it just something that internally is being worked on and will be trusted for approval, just like the most recent stuff did?
Actually, just recently I had a contract for that.
Yeah, and I want to know if that was this.
That is that.
Because that may actually be removed from the list, since it's been.
I think you might want to check it off, right? It's something we're still.
I just think if that was the item, then.
That was the item, yeah, implementation is still ongoing, right, so you haven't seen the changes from that check yet as we.
But to come from within the point, does that impact council's time? Because it actually says on here, you know, as needed, but we, is there even any, did we already give the council decisions by the approval?
So.
See, yeah, I have a sense that there's a lot of conversation on green sections are.
I think that's, that's right, does anybody have any question about. The ongoing such annual. Or annual class ongoing items? Any concern about those, anyone?
I have one question about board and commission study sessions. Is that when we're meeting with the boards and commissions? So are we going to do that?
Yes, so on the advanced agenda, the advisory boards are already all scheduled, because you don't normally meet with the positive edition boards.
Oh, right, right, okay.
So I think in February thirteenth is parks and landscaping and the open space board. February twenty seventh will be all the coastal services boards all pretty done, and the LRC is in the summer.
All right.
And just so you know, the, the plan for those meetings is the, the boards will each bring their work plan to you, so you can approve their work plan, and what we told the staff liaisons is that. It's pretty simple for sustainability to align their work plan with your work plan, right, there's a lot of overlap. It's a lot harder for the team, for example, to align their work plan, so what we told staff is that the advisory board work plans, where there's overlap should align with the city council work plan. But more specifically, they should not work in opposition to the city council work plan, or in opposition to the departmental work, because sometimes we have found that boards come in and. Decide we're going to do X, and you're like, that's not on the departmental work plan, that's not on the city council work plan, and staff do not have the capacity to handle it right now, so we're trying to get them to focus on. Complementing the work that's already going on, not adding to the work itself.
Yeah, the advising, if there are issues that we don't know about, but you know. Yeah, not, not working in cross purposes or. Projects that are completely outside the scope of what we're.
So the February thirteenth, February twenty seventh, and the March twelve meetings are all according to those.
So are we only going to meet with them once a year? But you, okay, increasing that, your meeting schedule?
Well. Council member, Peggy.
I would like to have more interaction with boards. I think it's important, I mean, they're putting in a lot of time to come up with their work plans, come up with their priorities, to find what the needs are for these different groups, and we don't really have a chance. Talk with them and, and discuss it, and I think it, it would just be helpful to have more input. And discussion between the boards and the council, not decision making, but just a discussion where we all sit around and talk about, what do you think?
Let me add, well. I'm just the only guy, I actually think it's a good idea, there is very little engagement with the advisory board, helping council to engage where we are, or for us to even understand where they are throughout the year, like. They look at the work plan, but in six months or seven months, are these staying in track with the things we want to?
One thing that's important is that. If we do that, there's definitely a staff requirement. Because each, each of these boards, commissions, staff. If you add anything, which, and I'm not trying to discourage that, I believe. I've heard the same thing from the board's positions, like, in the water, engagement model aspect. You're doubling the time that staff is working on that.
Then what about reappointing a liaison from council to each of the boards?
That's. I want to say it's probably.
Yeah, I'm going to say that in my world, best practice is not to appoint the council. Tends to generate angst among the boards, because some boards get better interactions than others. And sometimes it generates a lot more politics, depending on which council members assigned to which board and what they tell them, and the stuff that goes through the personal serve on how that works. Is somewhat terrifying.
Yeah.
I like where we're starting, with these meetings, after they read, we need more conversation, interaction with the boards, I'm not certain that adding them to. Another meeting later in the year is, is the best way to make that, it, I don't know, but I would love to, to have a conversation with the chair and the boards. Of what they envision for connection looks like, and to be sitting here assuming we know what it looks like, with the vast amount of intentions that we might be missing, so I would propose that we stick with this. And then however it happens, I'll give it to staff who are the experts in all of this, but how do we improve that relationship, your engagement with that engagement?
A great, a great comment, one suggestion that's been made to me is that we have. Quarterly check-ins, either with the full council or. Groups of council members with the ball chairs. So that you don't, which, which still creates a time, you know, impact. But maybe. A good way of trying to. Provide a little bit of. Additional. Communication between the boards, commissions and council, it has been, this has been a really huge issue in terms of complaints by boards and commission. Every board and commission has said that they. Even if they didn't like the liaison system, there was more communication than they felt. That there was at least some input into council, and since that went away, and it went away for a variety of good reasons, I think, they just turned out to be maybe. Too little contact between the boards and commissions and council, and people get frustrated with that, so some, something in the middle clearly is a good idea. What I'm struggling with is whether we can really decide that tonight, but I.
Where's the additional staff impact? By having the chair on, and speaking up at the.
We would recommend staff liaison always join the chair when they're in a meeting, so the staff liaisons included, understanding all of that information, and also connect to help make sure that this is lining up with staff, with departmental work plans, with council, and then. Because staff are always staffing, right, the boards are advising and promising things, staff are the ones who are doing.
And some chairs are more engaged than others, and may bring information back that others don't, and some chairs. They bring something up that the board hasn't discussed yet, so the liaison can say, you know, this happened to discuss very rarely, it's just kind of balancing out. Entire process.
So does it seem like they are good with at least once, like, this early meeting, and maybe, maybe it's like, the, the staff liaisons can let us know if it's too burdensome to meet a second time later in the year for. And like an updating to see if they're in charge of it.
I don't think it's the staff, or it's good, oh, wait, did you say staff liaisons input?
I have a few thoughts, I do think council may have a nice thought as well, that I'd like to share.
I, I would maybe propose that we add this as item six L, it feels like a substantive discussion to me, board and commission engagement, and I just. I'm not sure this is the right meeting to figure it out.
I see, we like that.
I think you're right. I'm comfortable with that, I think that's. I do think it's important, I mean, it's important in six L, but I do think it's important.
So like this conversation actually be a conversation.
Yeah, so that we can, you know, we can hear what the best practice is. Here sticks a tandoor, and what we might do in the occasion, and back and forth. And public, public, public input and.
I will say that the, this is not unique to us, this problem, of course, not feeling very, city boulder. Hired someone very near, dear to our hearts, that we all know very well to do an entire process, to revamp their coordination process, so it's, it's, it's what I hear going on.
So it's not just you guys or nothing, it's absolutely not unique. It is absolutely not unique.
No, well, and, and which is good, because to your point, having that practices is something, I, I think that's a good. Does everybody believe that that's a good way of doing it? And a medium priority?
I would say practically speaking. You can get the schedule and the timing, so you have the first meetings with the board scheduled, well, like, we go through that first.
Yeah.
And then bring somebody else back, because we're not going to allow that competition.
I think that's, that sounds good, are we thinking, or in terms of. Still time, or we're talking about Q two?
I think Q two at the earliest, let us.
Maybe Q three.
Take all of this information back and play tennis with our plans, and then bring you a recommendation.
And maybe figure out to what the different options might look like, is it chair people, is it full boards, or what's leading up? I'd say probably. They'll hold me to that.
And, you know, in the meantime, one of the things that might be useful, so that, you know, the boards and commissions, you will burn on this issue, is to tell them and. Have them make some suggestions, and work on some suggestions, because like, to the point that was raised earlier, they have. Most of the boards and commissions have very strong views on this, and can do a good job of describing to staff what things might, options they might, what they like, and then we can. Sit through it all, because that, we. Yeah, I, I was going to make it a low priority, but. I was going to make it a low priority, but I am minimal to making it medium, if that's what suits the group. I think the reason for making it a medium priority is that, I mean, part of it is, is objects, there's, this is the concern of some of them, I'm saying, like, why am I even doing this? And we don't want to discourage people, we want to encourage the volunteer participation, the, the only other thing, so that's, that would be my suggestion. The other question is, I think I've heard. Say. That. The non, or the quiz judicial boards have not traditionally that.
Depends on how far back you go, it depends, I think we thought initially the advisory boards were the most pertinent ones to bring, because they need a work plan through, quite a few boards don't have work plans, let's just speak. But I do know one positive issue board, who probably likes to base space spending with you guys, and I also know that the chairperson of planning commission mentioned in his interview. Conversation about comp plan, so.
I had spoken briefly with Steve Brenice, who's the chair of the planning commission, frankly, who had expressed a desire to meet with council. Um, who had expressed a desire to meet with council. Um, to talk a little bit about comp plan. Uh, again. Um. I know all these things do have their impacts. Um, and.
It's getting like additional meetings at this point, that they'd be in April or May anyway, going on that, um, if not June, so.
What, what kind of additional meetings?
If you want to bring in some of the financial.
What do people think?
I feel like those have been my round, those are one of dinners, they're a little bit more because, can't really, the discussion is different. So it's more like you get together, HPC, you go, gosh, we appreciate you so much, and we can hang out, and know you a little bit better, but it's not as. Formal of a guideline.
Yeah, I should say too, the meetings we have scheduled for you aren't supposed to be dinners, they're supposed to be.
Yes.
Um, it's going to get, it's going to get better, so, um. We want something different than that.
Like you could have like an appreciation dinner, if you will, with like, you know, the licensing board and things that like, thank you so much, like. But again, the meeting with the licensing board isn't really necessary as much as just like connection and appreciation and face time.
And we used to do an appreciation event with the boards and commission, like dinner. That's also something we, it would probably be scheduled on a separate night.
Yeah.
Be social.
I, I would say that, that certainly the client commission was not interested in just socializing. Um, I mean, there are the, you know, the, the current plan is, um. Correct me if I'm wrong, but those are not post judicial. The, that's the one area that the client commission will be working on, but it's not post judicial. Um, it's not the only one. They deal sometimes with, well, workups and stuff like that, but, um, I think. Again, my conversation goes, Steve is more up to, you know, um, are there particular kinds of things that you guys are thinking about? That's maybe. You can share with us or, and. Whether that's a good way of doing it or not, that's a question for all of you. Um, I know that they raised.
Yeah, Rob may have a better understanding of what their plan is for now. Comp, the role of planning commission versus the role of city council, I don't know. We'll be in the chat spot.
What he, I mean, yeah. Yeah, I think there's, there's a different role on that, um, but a lot of overlap as well. Uh, I mean, I think we're planning targeted engagement with planning commission, I mean, they're not. You know, staff's working directly with the consultant, we're going to be bringing at different stages of the comp plan. Um, you know, different analysis and proposals, the policy and work through that kind of seem to be visioning as well. Like, those are all different stages that will be going to the planning commission, but also engaging probably hence with the council. Um, in each, each of those steps. Um, so I think we're planning on, you know, depend on what big issues come up, but it might be three to five really formal engagements with the planning commission. Um, during the course of development and adoption of the comp plan. Um. So that phase of the world.
And they clarified, do you mean the engagements with the public, the meetings with us too, everybody?
We talked about this, so that was specifically the planning mission. There's going to be, um, you know, there's going to be dozens and dozens of very formal engagements. I mean, we've already done focus group meetings and targeted interviews. And then, and we're still, as, as you know, Chris, we're kind of developing kind of governance structure of this a little bit. But we do have an initial plan and we're actually starting, um, to go to every board and commission. We're starting tomorrow night, staff level, starting discussions about the comp plan and getting them on the comp plan. Um, so it's, wait, I mean, the planning commission has a very specific role in our ordinance. Um, and we're gonna, you know, honor that, and they're gonna have a, a big voice as far as making a final recommendation to the council. Um, so I, I mean, I can, I can get more into the structure of that, but I think we're planning in session where we're going to drag that more here, so that helps.
Yeah, and I, I don't think we need to get too much into that. I guess, uh, the only, the only general question that I'll have was, um, do we? Do we want to expand our menu of meetings, boards and commissions to also. These others, we, we're going to have plenty of, uh, opportunities to interact, I suppose, but. How do people feel about that? Yes?
Um, is that what we would discuss if this was put on a medium priority, unless that's what we found?
We certainly could, so our current proposal is if we move this up and go with our currently scheduled study sessions for permissions. And then later in the Q two, we would bring back a larger conversation about engaging reports and missions, um, in general, as well as how. And when you want to schedule additional meetings, if that's the approach you want to take, so we certainly could, would you see wrong?
Yeah, I, I just had an idea about this. Um, you know, there'll be some overlap where we're meeting with the planning commission, you all separately on very similar topics. One way to, um, something to consider is maybe we have a joint meeting, but specifically about the concrete plan with the planning commission and city council.
Right.
Uh, we can, I don't know exactly how we'll structure that, but if you like that, then that can serve as your engagement.
And then perhaps we can talk about the other quasi judicials at that meeting.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, because that's, I mean, that's the main one I thought from, if there are others.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure the licensing authority needs extra time or the board adjustment, and so you'd like not want to schedule meetings, you don't need that.
HPC would be a really good one though, because they are, you know, updating incentives and quality. And it's definitely something they're going to want to be recommending to you in the next year to.
I will say to, um, Kathy Martin sent me a message, she's listening in, that, uh, this is a budget year. And the boards definitely, she said Rab in particular, will be interested in submitting budget information regarding capital improvement and operational costs. So, um, I think maybe something in Q two that we bring back is the process we would suggest to get information. We've used different processes in the best for the wars to get their information on budget. So maybe we can find something a little more specific that they're all going to use the same process, and you're going to take it all under the same thing.
So we, well, well, yeah. Sam, I didn't.
Yeah.
Um, do we? Um. Let's see. There was a question, well, not a question, um. Think about whether it's. Uh, yeah, this is an item that I just learned about today. Um, and it relates to the annual and ongoing. Item airport impact litigation efforts, it's a space on the Rockland Metropolitan Airport Committee Noise Roundtable. Um. But if they kind of, kind of raised it, um, I received a call from the chair. Of the roundtable, Devin Scha, who was on the room field of the council. And he wanted to give a heads up. Um, that, uh, some communities currently involved in the roundtable. Uh, are considering very seriously pulling out of it. Um, that the community that I think, I think Westminster, uh. Dealt with this issue last night, but didn't reach a conclusion, but will soon, and probably that'll be the first one. I don't know, you know, I don't know what they're going to do. Um, I'm, I, I think from. Uh, the standpoint of timing. Um, my understanding is that the roundtable itself. Uh, which meets, what, the third week of every month, is that right?
First, Thursday.
First Thursday, okay. Um, they're probably going to talk about it at their next meeting. Um, which will be, yeah, interesting, uh, those meetings are quite lively. Um, I think that's probably been very diplomatic. Um. Devin is terrific, but it's very hard to sort of the world. Um. And I think what, what he said is probably in March, there will be a decision. About whether to just disband the roundtable or not, or at least for all of the communities to. State their views about that. I, I don't know what happens if some communities pull out and others don't. Um, there's a lot of ferment right now, there's a lawsuit that's just been filed. There are a lot of, uh, moving parts to this. But I raise it only because it's likely that this is one of those issues that's probably going to raise its head whether we like it or not. And we ought to be prepared for it, we would kind of give me some advance notice, and we would use some advance notice and staff. Maybe staff already knows about all this stuff, I don't know, but he called me today. I don't know, we, we, we think about that right now. Um.
It's not an agenda item on, on our agenda, so we probably shouldn't have much discussion.
Say again.
It's not on our agenda to discuss tonight, so.
Yeah, um, I, I just don't know more information than that, um, I know, um. Council member, uh. Jack Norman talked with Councilor Peggy. Uh, on that, on the roundtable. Um, more about details, which is, he's going to call you.
From a work plan perspective, I think it's helpful to know that we might have a meeting on this. If we get more information, you can add it to council's agenda and have a discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know much more than that, I just know that there's, uh, there's interest by a number of communities. Employing out and maybe doing more of a. A potential litigation against somebody. Um. Because of some information that's kind of polite, which suggests that the whole process was perhaps. Marvel. Um, so anyway, um, other items there, yeah.
Just did that mean we went, instead of saying update memos, we say amended? I mean, it's, I mean, it's a minor change, but we're having the conversation about what's changed on this to keep it on to that topic, and so that's.
I'm, I'm agree with Sam, and any item that shows up, it's going to require a meeting regardless of where it is and what it says.
Yeah.
When you scan. Yeah.
She knows these things, trust me. Anybody knows that. Let's say, okay, um, other items around their work plan. Did anybody have some, some going on? Why it's so pat yourselves on the back? Um, I'm glad we did this, um, uh, because, um. For the reasons that I stated before, I think all that, uh, councilman Karen was able to, uh, join us on this and provide very valuable. Addition, so thank you. I think the other piece of this is. Um, there, one, one comment that was made to me by staff during the break was. There are some things in here that we could have flushed out, like maybe we should have flushed out in the fall and didn't. And I think to the extent it was a challenging discussion, I think it actually was a great discussion. Uh, but I wouldn't say robust discussion, but that, um. I'm glad we did a little bit more of a. Ferment ethic, because we're about ready to dive in, and I'm very excited about our connection, so, um. Alright, the, the next item, it is quarter to nine. And a suggestion was made to me about the city council expectation that flew this to the next meeting, to the next meeting.
We were going to suggest the January twenty seventh special meeting.
Because that.
It's training that night, we can add it on to that.
I thought she'd partner well with me.
Or me?
This topic partners well with it, having read through it.
Yes.
Any, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Is, is there anybody in our group that, that has concerns or changes? Yes?
Yeah.
That's all I want to know.
I'm going to have to.
And I'm bigger, I'm going to get to some of the. Others. Looks like everybody's kind of. Just. Alright, um, then. You're a German.